So, good afternoon, everybody. I told you yesterday, we plan to have a next press availability on Thursday of next week, but we will call you back if something happened that warranted another press conference. I think today qualifies. So, we wanted to, and thank you for coming back for that. So, we wanted to go over a few things from this session and then make, I'll make myself available for questions. Obviously, the legislature just concluded the second special session of this year. And I know you probably have questions about the bills that they passed that are headed my way and whether they're going to be signed or vetoed. And the truth is, we haven't received them. There were a lot of late conference committee reports that we haven't had an opportunity to look at, and I think some of the bills actually died on the calendar. So, we'll have more information on the bills in the coming days. It's been reported that the House Republicans have affixed enough signatures to a petition to end the COVID-19 public health emergency. At least, that's what I've been told. And they are acting as if that public health emergency is over. And in fact, we have a public health emergency. I go over the numbers with you every day, and we'll go over those numbers again in just a moment. I haven't seen a petition. I don't know how many signatures are there. I don't know what the petition says, and so I can't talk too much about the specifics of the petition. But if I understand their intentions, I will tell you that it's reckless and irresponsible and unconscionable. And I believe that the only way they could have gotten 53 or more signatures is for that petition that contains the signature of a number of folks who've expressed to me privately, but also have said publicly, that they believe the petition to be a bad idea and that it's unconstitutional. They're right. I stand up here every week, sometimes multiple times a week, and talk about numbers, talk about the COVID situation in Louisiana. In fact, I was just here yesterday to talk about how there are numerous COVID spikes going on all over the country and around us. Whether you call it the third surge or the second wave, it's happening around the United States of America. More than 70,000 cases reported yesterday. That's the first time in three months we've reached that level. The most hospitalizations across the country since August the 20th, and more than 41,000 for COVID-19. And you don't have to look too far. Just the other day, Mississippi began to reinstate the mask mandate that it had lifted just a couple of weeks before because of a steep rise in cases. Now, it is true, as I mentioned yesterday, and I'm very thankful, that Louisiana has fared far better lately than our neighbors have in terms of new cases and test positivity and so forth. But we know that that can quickly change. It only takes a few days of behavior that no longer conforms to the mitigation measures and the restrictions that we've had in place in order for us to be set back months in the progress that we have made. If we stop doing what we know works, what has been proven to work, what has been recommended to us by experts, we know we're going to be in a much different place, in a much worse place. What I'd like to do now is go through a few slides with you. The first one deals with just the overall situation in Louisiana, and I know you've seen that slide a number of times. Today's numbers, we have 696 more cases being added. Hospitalizations are up over yesterday by 22. The number of people on ventilators is up. The number of deaths is up by 21. Now, again, relatively flat and stable numbers. I'm thankful for that, but I hope it wasn't lost on you. I just said 21 more people died since yesterday because of COVID-19. Next slide, please. This will show you the track of cases in Louisiana since the public health emergency first started. And you can see where we are today relative to where we've been before. You see the first surge back in the March-April timeline, and that was largely confined to a few metropolitan areas of our state. You then see that we come down into Phase 1, and then towards the end of July and in August, we see the second surge, much more widespread across the state of Louisiana, and then you see us start to come down. What you should note is that that decrease, that decrease happened because of that mask mandate that we issued, and we also, by the way, we didn't pull back. We remained in Phase 2, so we left the generally applicable occupancy levels in place, but we put in the mask mandate, and then we did close bars to on-premises consumption. And you see those cases come down. You also saw hospitalizations come down. In fact, I think it was two weeks to the day after that order that we started seeing hospitalizations reduce around the state of Louisiana, and we had multiple regions with zero available ICU beds at the time that happened. And then you see where we are today after going into Phase 3, because we have those mitigation measures in place and that mask mandate. You see that long plateau out towards the right, go back to the left. You see that long plateau out to the right where we've been stable. We'd like to get lower than that, and by the way, we would if more people would adhere to the mask mandate and make sure that they were following the social distancing guidelines and washing their hands, staying home when they're sick. But that's not a bad place to be. And I want to point out to you that that happened despite the fact that we had Labor Day weekend and two hurricanes, and we opened our schools and our higher education institutions. And we still have this flat plateau. So, we absolutely know that these mitigation measures work. It's not theory. It's been put into practice. You can go to the next slide now, please. Here, you can see hospitalization and ventilator usage over that same time horizon, and you can see when things happen with respect to putting in the stay-home order and when things start to come down, when you put in the mask mandate and things start to come down. Again, exactly two weeks after the mask mandate went into order, you finally saw those numbers of hospitalizations start to decrease. You also see that positivity line decrease, and that's the most significant indicator of what you're going to be faced with in the future, is how many tests are yielding positive results on a daily basis. Go to the next slide, please. The most recent White House Coronavirus Task Force report for the state of Louisiana, which is individualized, comes to us every single week, shows that we are number 36 in the country in new cases per 100,000 in population over the last week. And that is despite the fact that there is a surge going on across the country and including across the South, as I mentioned earlier. And in fact, our neighbors, and we're greatly influenced by what happens by our neighbors because of the mobility of people, our neighbors are Arkansas at number 12, Mississippi at number 13, and Texas at number 29. And then on test positivity, this too comes from the White House Coronavirus Task Force. This is last week's report. We're number 34 in the country, national rank. Now, y'all remember, there was a time when we had the steepest incline in case growth in the world. Number 34 in the country presently. Our neighbors, Texas is 18, Mississippi is 12, and Arkansas is 19. Now, right now, we are awaiting the petition. I will look and see what it says. Obviously, we'll take a look at the law as well. But one of the most important things for everyone to remember is that the proclamation that I issued remains in full force and effect. All of the mitigation measures that we have been talking about remain critically important, and those restrictions that are in that particular proclamation with respect to occupancy and otherwise remain in full force and effect, as does the mask mandate. In short, the Phase 3 order remains in effect. I want you to know, and this should surprise no one, I take my responsibility to the people of Louisiana very seriously, especially during this global pandemic. I have at all times relied upon accurate data that has been fully transparent to everyone who cared to look at it and follow the recommendations of the White House Coronavirus Task Force that were available to anyone who cared to look at it, as well as the recommendations of other scientists and doctors. And they all agree, the mitigation measures are working in Louisiana. Just last month while visiting, Dr. Deborah Birx, who was the leading medical authority on the White House Coronavirus Task Force, came to Louisiana. She was at LSU. She said that they actually learned a lot from Louisiana and our mitigation measures and their effectiveness, especially as it relates to the mask mandate. And that was actually further demonstrated to her with something that she didn't know because LSU had conducted studies of its own on campus of wastewater that showed a precipitous decline in virus two weeks after the mask mandate went into place. She had not seen that type of study before relative to when mandates were put into place, and she said that it absolutely demonstrated the efficacy of that particular mandate. She further told me and everybody there that she's extremely concerned, and if you turn on the news, any station, you're going to see this, extremely concerned about what happens over the rest of this calendar year. As we move through the fall and into the winter, into flu season, when people are driven indoors by colder temperatures, what's going to happen with the spread of this disease, accompanied potentially by the spread of the flu? And she made an appeal to everyone there, everyone there, including our legislative leadership, that we maintain our approach, that we be disciplined and steadfast and maintain our approach through that time period. The simple facts are that masks work, social distancing works, washing your hands frequently work, staying at home when you're sick works. These things are necessary if we want to slow the spread of COVID-19 in Louisiana. And occupancy restrictions are absolutely essential, otherwise you cannot engage in the physical distancing. If businesses and other venues have 100% of their occupancy occupied, they are not going to be physically distancing. And there is no definition of physical distancing that doesn't require six feet between people who are not of the same immediate household. So, these restrictions are absolutely essential if we are going to try and to succeed in minimizing the transmission of this virus, the number of people who contracted the disease, the number of people who go to the hospital, and yes, the number of people who die. You know, burying heads in the sand and just pretending that COVID isn't a problem isn't going to help. The virus doesn't care that you're tired of it. It doesn't care that you don't care. It just doesn't work like that. Tomorrow morning, I'm going to be going to a memorial service for April Dunn, a member of my team, a treasured member of my team here in the governor's office. You may remember, she died from COVID-19 back in March. We're going to a service tomorrow because it hadn't been safe to have a service up to now of the type that her mother wanted for her. She was bright. She was hardworking. She advocated for individuals with disabilities just like herself. And when I think of all the good work that April did over her short life, it certainly warms my heart. But when I think of all the good work that she could have done for our state but for the fact that she died prematurely, it breaks my heart. And then you think that as of today, 5,614 Louisianans are dead from this disease. That's more people than live in my hometown. How many more does it require to get people's attention and to take this seriously? And sadly, that number goes up every single day. When is the last time I reported a zero? Because I don't, that's a sincere question, because I don't remember it. Every day, people are dying here in this state and around the country from COVID-19. That's 5,614 mothers, fathers, daughters, sons, uncles and aunts, friends, neighbors. These are real people. These are our brothers and sisters in Christ. At least, that's what I believe as a Catholic Christian. And yes, as I mentioned earlier, it is my constitutional duty and therefore my obligation as governor to protect the people of Louisiana while we have a public health emergency. And you can take away the declaration, I guess, but you're not going to take away the emergency. You only take away the tools necessary to deal with that emergency and try to manage it and minimize the people who get sick and the people who go to the hospital and the people who die. And we certainly owe that to our healthcare workers. Think about how hard they've been working since March, overburdened, many of them dealing with the virus themselves or some family member, and then going to work every single day, struggling to keep people alive. I know that everybody wants to return to normal. Nobody more than I do, by the way. But in order to get as much normalcy as is possible in the meantime, without overwhelming our hospitals and their capacity to deliver lifesaving care, we simply have to engage in common sense measures that work and that can only work through the proclamations that I have been issuing. Almost exactly nine months ago today, and I know it seems like a long time, I stood on the steps of the Capitol and I pledged to work hard every single day for all the citizens of our great state. I said I was inspired by the goodness, the decency, the generosity of the people of Louisiana. I told you that my love for this state had only deepened as I met more Louisianans over the course of my first term. I promised you I would serve all the people of our state, even those who disagree with me. And in fact, especially the people who disagree with me. And that has never been more important than right now. My resolve hasn't changed. If anything, it is stronger. And by the way, my belief that the people of Louisiana are good and decent and generous people has never been stronger than it is right now. And so, I'm going to continue fighting for all of our people. I'm going to continue to fight to keep the number of deaths down, to keep people out of our hospitals, to make sure that we do what works. And I appeal to that goodness and decency and generosity to the people of Louisiana to do the same. As I've mentioned many times, we all have a role to play, and we can't get through this in the best shape possible unless we play that role. So, wear your mask, social distance, wash your hands, stay home when you're sick, and watch and protect the vulnerable. We're going to get through this, and we're going to get through this together. And with that, I will take a few questions. Sam, you are always the first, and Greg would beat you, but since Greg's not here, you're first. You go ahead.
So, Governor, my understanding, the law contemplates upon receiving, I guess, this petition that you are to issue an executive order ending your proclamation. Is there any scenario under which you would do that? Do you intend to do that? Or do you intend not to? I know you've talked about it not being constitutional. Do you intend to issue that order, you know, ending your proclamation?
Well, I need to get the proclamation, I'm sorry, I need to get the petition and just see what it says, see what it purports to direct me to do. And until I get it, those types of questions are largely hypothetical, and I just don't want to go there. But what I can tell you is I'm going to do everything that I can to make sure that we manage this public health emergency for the public health emergency that it is. Yes, ma'am.
Governor, are you anticipating that this will ultimately get decided in court whether this law is constitutional and this petition is constitutional? It seems like that's the only remedy that's left.
I would say that that's possible. One of the things that could happen is those members of the House who've signed the petition, who've told me and others that it's a terrible idea to do the petition and that it's unconstitutional, they can remove their names and then it goes away. So, I guess that's possible, too. Yes?
I know you haven't received it yet, and you don't know what the petition says, but with how it came about and what this could mean, is there anything about it that scares you a little bit, makes you afraid?
Well, I'm certainly disappointed that so many people would be so reckless and irresponsible. I'm not going to say that I stand here before you and the people of Louisiana scared, because I just told you, I'm going to do everything that I can to protect our public health and to make sure that we can manage this disease. And quite frankly, and I want to say this clearly, I apologize to no one for the decisions I have made. And I have bent over backwards to be as bipartisan or nonpartisan as I can be. And you would think for House Republicans, it would count for something that the actions I'm taking are those that have been asked of me by the White House Task Force. But I guess not. And it is sad. If there was ever a time to rise above partisan politics, it is during a public health emergency? If there was ever a time, you would think it would be now. I happen to think that's what the people of Louisiana expect. I know damn well it's what they deserve, and it is what I have been trying to do from the very beginning. You haven't seen me while certain members of the legislature and others have been out there very, very critical to me and on personal terms. You haven't seen me responding in kind because I think the people of Louisiana want better than that. And the fact that the partisanship is rearing its ugly head in this manner and that it's happening from people who know better, I promise you, they know better. And I know they know better because they've told me. It's sad. So, it's a sad day, but I'm not scared. Yes, sir?
It seems like kind of the main point is to kind of open up a few more businesses across the state. Is there any possible compromise that you guys can do or that you're willing to work with Republican lawmakers to maybe open up a few more businesses or be a little bit more leeway with it?
First of all, I don't know if their point is to open up a few more businesses. Which ones are closed? We have some restrictions on bars. Our businesses are open in Louisiana as much or more than our neighboring states. I mean, when you get to 75% generally applicable occupancy limits, I mean, how many restaurants do you go into that normally have more than 75% of their tables filled? What businesses are closed today, other than bars and parishes that haven't yet gotten the 5% positivity, and they're only closed for on-premises consumption, not otherwise? So, I don't know that they're looking for anything like that. That's what I'm saying. There's nothing about this that makes sense. This is just political. It is irresponsible. So, while I guess it's possible that some people who signed the petition want something that might, would satisfy them, I don't know if it's putting more businesses open because we don't have many that are closed. But I will tell you this, that might be their intent, but there are some real-world ramifications where my proclamation, 134 JBE 2020, to be terminated. It puts all federal funding that the state receives through the Stafford Act for COVID-19 at risk. The Stafford Act by definition applies to emergencies and disasters. If we don't have one, what right do we have to that funding? Because the contract that I have with FEMA right now requires me to designate one federal coordinating officer, and that contract is not good if we don't have a public health emergency. And I promise you, FEMA isn't interested in dealing with, they're not going to go and try to see if all 64 of our police jury presidents or parish presidents are interested in doing their own contract. That's not the way it works. I can tell you that if this were to be terminated, GOSEP will no longer be authorized to respond to local government requests for COVID aid. And you think, well, that may not be a big deal. Well, I can tell you, since March, there's been 9,500 of them that we've responded to. GOSEP will no longer be authorized to procure personal protective equipment for distribution to local governments and school systems and hospitals and medical providers, nursing homes, et cetera. GOSEP will no longer be authorized to execute medical staff augmentation contracts to provide additional doctors and nurses for our hospitals, including our makeshift field medical stations and medical monitoring stations to deal with surges should that happen. That authority to go out and contract won't be there. The National Guard no longer authorized to conduct local testing. They test more than 1,000 people every single day. I get the report every night. Can't do it. If you want this thing to get out of hand, stop testing and lose all visibility into COVID-19 and the transmission and where it's happening and what the real positivity rate is in Louisiana. The National Guard would no longer be authorized to continue to monitor and work the warehousing of things that come into the state related to COVID-19 and to deliver those things, PPE, testing supplies, et cetera, to local governments and hospitals and nursing homes and schools and universities. The National Guard would no longer be able to go to nursing homes with testing supplies, assist with decontamination and sanitization when nursing homes experience outbreaks. And these are not hypothetical things that we might one day want to do. These are all things that we've been doing every single day. The Department of Health would no longer be authorized to provide nursing homes with testing supplies. What authorizes the Department of Health to be in that nursing home is the public health emergency, to oversee and help with decontamination and sanitization again if outbreaks occur. State resources no longer available to help the parish and local governments, and they will have to procure services and supplies for COVID on their own, and no longer be authorized to utilize emergency procurement methods. All of them want those emergency procurement methods, by the way. Should a vaccine become available? Should a vaccine become available, or multiple vaccines, the Department of Health would not be authorized, absent a public health emergency, to do all of the steps necessary to allocate, distribute, and administer that vaccine. And most importantly, we will lose all of the progress that we have made since July. More people are going to get sick, more people are going to go to the hospital, and more people are going to die. Not just, and think about that, just, but not just the 5,614 who have already died. And by the way, there are other reasons why it's reckless and irresponsible. Because of that huge March and April surge and the July surge, we still are number three in the country in per capita cases, even though we're doing much better. But we would be the only state in the nation without a public health emergency in place. And without a public health emergency, many of the laws that were passed, statutes that were passed and put into place during the regular session to immunize schools and businesses don't work because they're all tied to the existence of a public health emergency. So when I tell you reckless and irresponsible and unconscionable, that doesn't even begin to scratch the surface. That's a long answer to your question. Yes?
Governor, it seems this latest petition spawned out of a belief among House Republicans that you were going to veto Mark Wright's bill. Did you indicate to them you were going to veto Mark Wright's bill? And did they indicate to you that this was coming if you were going to?
The answer is that I asked Mark Wright to come see me yesterday morning, Representative Wright, and he did not come up. And so I haven't had an opportunity to visit with him at all. The truth is, I haven't read the bill. But I will tell you what I've told you from the very beginning, when this session was called. I will surrender none of the authority that I have under the Constitution and the laws of this state that I believe to be essential to properly and effectively manage this public health emergency. And if you just read that bill, you would see that it would seek to manage this emergency by committee, and I just can tell you, that does not work. It will not work. I know. I've been working this every day since March. I know how quickly decisions have to be made. I know how urgent this situation is. And quite frankly, legislators who don't even believe we have a problem ought not have a role in the decision-making process. I am always willing to continue, as I have, by the way, to discuss what I am doing and the data that is informing my decisions and all of those recommendations coming from our public health department, but also from the White House Task Force with legislative leadership and with any other individual legislator who wants to have that conversation. We've done that. You have a question?
Along the same lines, which is...
You don't think they'll get the same answer?
There seem to be some expectation among Republicans that that bill is going to be vetoed, and that seemed to fuel the latest signature drive for the petition. So I guess what I'm wondering is, did you have any conversations with the House leadership or with individual House Republicans who indicated that they intended this new petition effort if that bill got vetoed?
Let me tell you how bad that bill was. In the Senate, they had to twist arms to get the votes to make it pass, and they did the same thing in the House where it passed with 54 votes. It needed 53 just to pass. There was nobody in leadership or elsewhere who expected that bill to be signed into law. All right. I don't see any hands up. Oh, one more.
Have you spoken to legislative leaders since news of this petition broke today?
I have not, not since the petition broke, no. When I say legislative leaders, I've had many meetings today with different legislators to talk about different things. And so the answer is, I've had an opportunity to speak to some, both in the House and the Senate, but I haven't had an opportunity to speak with the President or the Speaker since the news broke. But I do look forward to that next opportunity to visit with them and to share with them many of the same concerns that I just shared with you. So with that, I'm going to conclude this press conference, and I'll do so by continuing to urge everyone to do what makes sense, to be a good neighbor, to play the role that you have to play to protect yourself, your family, and your neighbors. Everything, as I speak to you right now, is just the same as it was yesterday when I spoke to you. The proclamation remains in place, the restrictions are in place, the mitigation measures remain the same ones that have been recommended for a long time, the ones that work. So I'm going to ask you, wear your mask, wash your hands, stay home when you're sick, and make sure you're physically distancing when you're around people who are not part of your immediate household. And if you will do those things and follow all the other restrictions that we currently have in place, we're going to be able, I am confident, to continue to have a stable environment in our state with respect to COVID. If we don't, we will see happen here what has happened very recently and is happening elsewhere around the country and elsewhere around the South. Let's not do that. Let's not bury more people than we need to. I think that's the very definition of being a good neighbor. So thank you. We'll see you next week.